This conference will now be recorded. I will now call the Besiris City Joint Regular Committee meeting for Thursday, April 23rd, 2020. It is 6:00 PM. Members present are Mark McKeever, Kevin Myers, looks like me is on here, Bruce Truca, Candace Yokum, myself, and I see, I do not see, oh, there's Lisa, and Lisa Allsept. Up first, we have the fact that the meeting was called to order by me at 6:00 PM. Number two, we have public participation. Does anybody in the general public have anything they'd like to voice to council tonight? Hearing none, I will move on to the Order of Committee business. Up first, we have Economic Development, and I will call that order at 6:01 PM. If everybody looks in their packet, we'll have the yearly CHIP program. This is just, I believe, for us, Todd, to process the legislation, so that way they can start taking applications for the CHIP program for the 2020 year. Does anybody have any questions? I guess I'll reiterate, this is something we do every year, as the CHIP program is offered yearly to citizens that need to do repairs to their homes. This program allows them to process an application and be available for some funding that will help them in their situation to do needed repairs to their homes. So if nobody has any questions or anything else, I would like to receive a motion to process this through.
So moved, Myers.
Second, Yokum.
I have a first by Myers and a second by Yokum. All of those in favor say, oh, you want to do roll call, Todd? Sorry.
Yeah, I'll do that. First, though, I have a question for the law director. Is this requested as emergency legislation? Because I noticed that in years past, the deadline on the state from the state was usually early May. I don't know when the deadline is, but I'm assuming it's sometime around then.
Yeah, usually it's emergency legislation request from the administration, because it's due in mid-spring every year.
Okay, I'll do a roll call vote then for emergency legislation requested from the administration. Yokum?
Yes.
Allsept? Allsept is muted.
Sorry, yes.
Thank you. And Myers?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Motion carries, so I will then close Economic Development at 6:03 PM.
Candace, you're muted.
I'm so sorry. Public Lands and Buildings Committee is ordered at 6:04 PM. We will be talking about the, first up is Mary Street Land Parcel. What's going on with that? There's a section of land by a building that is not, it's not platted, doesn't have a plating number even, and does anyone have any, any thoughts on this? I'm wondering-
I guess I would like to, sorry, I didn't want to interrupt you. I was just gonna say, I would say this is a great thing to do for Mr. Hensley, since he has taken ownership of the old city garage down there. He has flourished with customers. As you can see, there are cars parked around there all the time for business. I believe he's just trying to add some more room for storage and other things, so I, if this is something we can do, I fully support helping him to grow his business even more.
I agree.
Do we have, does anyone know if we have a first price opinion for it or anything like that yet, or would that be something the CIC would get if we moved it to the-
Well, there's two steps to this process. First is, the city has to own the piece of property, right? Right now, it's an unplatted parcel. It doesn't have a parcel number, doesn't have a street address or anything. So the first thing we have to do is, we have to acquire it. So what I'd be looking for today is a resolution for Public Lands and Buildings through, and ultimately council, that they want the city to acquire this parcel of land. Once the city owns this parcel of land, then we can visit whether or not we want to sell all or part of it, whether we want to transfer it to the CIC and do anything with it, whatever we want to do. But first step is, we have to establish ownership of the parcel. There are, there is, if you look at the property lines, here, if you look at the property lines, you can, you can see that it does, right here, go a little bit into, into, into the Hensley property. So that's an issue that's gonna have to be dealt with once we get ownership of it. So, but first step is, we just gotta get ownership.
Okay, so what we're looking for right now, I would think, would be, does anyone want to make a motion to try to establish ownership resolution for the city to own that piece of land? Would that be what we are going for?
That is so moved.
Any second?
Second.
Okay, so we are gonna go ahead and move that on for the city to establish ownership. Next, and did that need to be an emergency, emergency legislation, or is that just looking into stuff?
If you don't pass it as an emergency, it'll be May, June, well, it'll be June before we get to the, get to do it. If you pass it as an emergency at the next council meeting, we'll start the process right away. First thing we'll have to do is get, some of it we could do in advance. We can get the, probably Mr. McKeever out there to get the legal description and get it all drawn up, but yeah.
Would now be the time for me to put that we'd like it as an emergency? Would we have to vote on that also right now before we move it to the next council meeting?
Correct. It would have to be requested as an emergency resolution to acquire that parcel of land.
Okay, does anyone want to make a motion to-
I'll change my motion. I'll change my motion to request emergency legislation.
Second, by anybody?
McKeever, second.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and talk about that at next council meeting. Next-
Do we need a, we have votes?
Sorry, sorry.
You're good.
Todd, do you mind doing roll call for me?
No problem. Vote.
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, next one.
Before you move on, Candy, before you move on, Candy, we're getting some feedback, and I see it's coming through on Vicky's microphone there. Vicky, if you could mute your microphone so we don't get the feedback unless, unless you're actually talking, that'd be much appreciated. Thank you.
Okay, next up for Public Lands and Buildings, we have Generator. They're looking for it to be an emergency. It, I could read more off through here, sorry. For the city, one thing I was wondering, trying to see if anybody's here, Rob, do you happen to know in that $50,000 quote, if it's included, that we were, we had somebody that was gonna do the electric on it in-house through us?
My understanding, yeah, no, my understanding was that the engineer's estimate was that the entire package was gonna be less than $50,000.
Installed, also?
Yeah, and because the city was gonna do some of the installation, pouring the concrete pad and some of the other work, so that, they expected the entire project to be less than the $50,000.
Okay, I might read off a little bit of this real quickly for people that are listening in. If they didn't read up on it, I'll go through it real quickly. Sorry. Todd, I should've picked up a packet. I thought I had it down. I've got this. So what we're hearing, City Hall Generator replacement is needed. The current generator burned up in February. The generator at City Hall is used as a backup to provide emergency power to the police department, HVAC, and lighting in case of an outage. It was installed in 1970. It's 50 years old. Electric control box shorted out. There are no parts available. Buckeye Power inspected it. Motor overheated and scarred the cylinder walls. Basically, it would have to be rebuilt due to its age, therefore, it would not be a good investment. It's not in the budget, and it is an emergency. Expecting it, quotes are under $50,000. We're doing some of the, city's doing some of the labor in-house to keep that quote down. We have to be able to record in the police department for record retention and able to operate. At this time, they would need an appropriation from the auditor in order to keep it moving forward. If quotes come back over $50,000, the city would come back to council to discuss it. Does anyone want to move this as an emergency and motion, do a motion to move this as an emergency?
So moved, vote.
Second, McKeever.
Todd, would you mind doing roll call for me again? I'm sorry.
The problem of vote?
Yes, sir.
McKeever?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so that is it for Public Lands and Buildings today. We are adjourned at 6:10 PM.
Are we, are we gonna do the Council Rules Ad-Hoc Committee or the COVID-19 Ad-Hoc Committee first?
Aren't we supposed to ask for public participation again?
Well, if, on the Ad-Hoc Committee on Council Rules, that's not actually on the agenda, but we've got stuff in the packet for it. That would come next, before public participation.
Okay.
Todd, do you know, is that, is now when you want us to do the Council Rules Ad-Hoc?
Oh, it's entirely up to you. I just put them in on the agenda in that order. If council wishes to go with the COVID Committee first and then the Council Rules, that's entirely up to council. If you're going to do the rules of procedure first, just note that on item number two, we have to amend, or the council, the committee has to amend the April 9 minutes, and you'll see in the packet of the, the minutes with those amendments are in your packet, and there's a lot of other stuff behind that. But the first thing on the agenda for the Council Rules Ad-Hoc Committee is the amendment of the April 9 minutes.
All right, does anybody have an issue with us doing this ad hoc first? Get it out of the way?
No.
Okay, if that's, if that's all right, I'll call the Ad-Hoc Committee on Council Rules of Procedure to order at 6:12 PM. And as members of this committee are Candace Yokum, Bruce Truca, Mark McKeever, and myself, Chair. As Mr. Hill just stated, we have to, or I'll entertain a motion to amend our minutes. Yeah, I'm looking through my packet. Todd, what was that date again?
It's for April 9, and you'll see on the, the changes are in blue. They're on page one. They are on page, are in five, and that is it.
Okay, so this is what Mrs. DeShawn brought up on the other evening, so we just wanted these in writing to look at. I've looked through them, and I assume everybody else has either any questions, or I'll entertain a motion to amend these minutes.
So moved.
Is everything there?
I thought it was from when I looked through it. Vicky, did you get a chance to look through this packet, make sure everything that you specified was in here? I compared it to your email, and it looked like it was all there.
I might have a statement to make, please.
Go ahead.
Per the Ohio Sunshine laws, the notice of a special meeting must specifically indicate those it may be discussed, and the public body may only discuss those specified issues at the meeting. The notice of this special meeting stated that it was for the, quote, "limited purpose of considering a draft ordinance," amending Besiris Codified Ordinance Chapters 111 and 113. Per the Ohio Sunshine laws, discussing matters at a special meeting that were not disclosed in the notice is a violation of the Ohio, is a violation of the Ohio Open Meeting Act. Therefore, I will take no part in discussing the amendment of the April 9, 2020 minutes.
Mr. Ratliff, I've got a question for you in regards to her statement. This is not a special meeting. This is a joint regular committee meeting of which this committee is part of, correct or not?
The, the Ad-Hoc Committee would be a special committee. It's not part of the regularly scheduled committees, so it would be a special committee, in a special meeting.
I'll tell you what, let's just table the whole thing, and we'll wait till we can give proper notice and have our next meeting then, if there's no objection to that.
Good idea.
There's no objection. Can I have a motion to table this, please?
So moved. McKeever, motion to table.
Okay, I've got a first remark and a second from Bruce. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, roll call Mr. Hill, please. You're muted.
McKeever? Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
Yokum?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, I'll recess the Special Ad-Hoc Committee on Council Rules of Procedure at 6:15 PM.
Okay, I'm going to call the Special Ad-Hoc Committee for COVID-19 Response Plan to Order, 6:16 PM. Members present are the Finance Committee Chair, Mark McKeever, Health and Safety Committee Chair, Kevin Myers, we have Lisa Allsept, and it appears that I see we have Mr. Walker from the FOP. It's showing that, I'm assuming that's Kevin Tiner there, but I don't see his picture. He'd be from the Ask Me, and Greg Hershey from IAF. So this meeting, this, this Ad-Hoc Committee was put together because the mayor requested that a COVID-19 Response Plan be presented to him by council, and at the same time, he asked a couple of the city's unions to come up with a plan. So it was my idea to bring everybody together to come up with a plan, and I don't think that we're under the original Friday deadline anymore. I think the administration has told Todd that they're no longer needing something by Friday. Is that right, Mr. Hill?
That is correct. They do not require anything by tomorrow, and they have not given any, any indication of any particular date on which they do need anything from council on this.
Okay, so I, I think just the, the fact that we are having the discussion is good enough to appease the administration for now. And I also don't think we're gonna know much more until we get the financials out here for the end of the month from the auditor. So in the meantime, I would like to just go around to each, each of the union reps that came to the meeting here and just see what thoughts they have as far as response plan to their specific departments, and just kind of throw some stuff out there on the, throw some ideas out there. And, and then as far as us having these meetings, I'm not even, I'm even open to having them. They don't even have to be at the same time here as the, these regular council committee meetings. If, if we wanted to decide to have them at another time, they gotta all be special advertised anyway, so that would give us the ability to have them whenever we want. And I'm also open to the idea, if anybody has any alternative as far as maybe having one. I, I don't think we can gain access to the council chambers. I don't think the mayor's gonna let us up there, but some of that stuff, I think, would be better if we were having in-person meetings over. But right now, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Walker there and let him kind of give, go ahead.
If you don't need me, I'll go ahead and check out at this point.
Yeah, I, I don't think we need, need you, Rob. We're not, we're not gonna come up with any, anything, and this isn't too nice.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, Mr. Walker, I'm gonna turn it over to you as far as coming up with some sort of, I think, at least knowing we have a short-term kind of idea here of what you guys suggest, because I don't think the immediate crisis is, I think the immediate crisis has gone away, and we're kind of now looking at several months out into the fall here as far as the possibility of a second wave. So I'm turning it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, Lieutenant Walker with Besiris Police Department. I'm the president of the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 68. I would begin solely by stating that with very little information, with no policies or procedures in place whatsoever up to this point, our department has not had any significant loss. There has been no infections, although we had two of them that were suspected. One was not a product of work environment. It was a wife who was a nurse who had possibly been exposed. Both were out for a maximum of five days. First one was for two, and the other one was for five days, and both of them came back negative after their testings and their exposures. So I would also say that what we're giving you tonight, just as a kind of a rough draft, if you will, obviously, this is a plan that we already have in place that we've been using, not only recently for the COVID-19, but to be quite honest with you, something Besiris Police Department has had in place for several decades that I'm aware of. So, but we have made some revisions to those due to the COVID-19, and this has been a learning process for everyone, and I think we've done pretty well. First of all, since the COVID-19 emergency was declared, the Besiris Police Department has been operating in a state of emergency for the last month and a half. The practices have been put in place are as follows. The officers are issuing misdemeanor summonses in the field and not necessarily bringing suspects on station to prevent contamination. They are not necessarily going into homes and are instead meeting with people outside their homes or via telephone. Officers have been told to maintain a minimum of six feet when talking to people. They've been, they have masks, gloves, and sanitizers now readily available to them. They've been educated on the protective equipment and how to use it. They've also been educated on the symptoms and signs of COVID-19, and we are not responding to non-emergency calls. That would be, for instance, lockouts would be a scenario there. Theft complaints, we've been taking over the phone. These are place, these are things that we have already put into place that has not had any effect whatsoever on our service to the community. Minor inconveniences, instead of seeing an officer at their home, they're talking to them on the phone, but the cases are still being handled, and the investigations are still being taken care of. So far, these steps, to this point, no one at the Besiris Police Department has contracted COVID-19, and data suggests by wearing the protective equipment, using hand sanitizer, frequent hand washing prevents the individual from contracting COVID-19. There's no logical reason at this point while these steps will not continue to work for us as a police department. Moving forward, when we are opened, reopened, we will go back to taking non-emergency calls, and also officers at this time are not being permitted any time off, other than our regular scheduled days off. That is to prevent overtime, any excessive cost to the city, and I also believe that we have, under the state of emergency, volunteered to forego overtime in the form of compensatory time to save the city money. But once everything opens up again, of course, we would be open to allowing officers to take time off again, such as vacation and such. Nothing will change as far as the first practices that I mentioned before under Phase 1 of this. If we were to reopen and there was supposed to be some sort of, or there was some sort of a contamination, pandemic resurgence of it, we would automatically go back into these things that have proven successful for us, which has, again, not only saved the taxpayer dollars, but it has also saved our officers from having to take time off work. We have the manpower we need to respond to these calls currently. There has not been any evidence up to this point based on these things that we have in place that our officers would experience some kind of a COVID-19 doomsday scenario. But in the event that we do have that scenario in place, we do, or excuse me, have that scenario occur, we do already have in place protocols that would allow us to move our officers around, change their shifts, mandate certain things such as the days off. We could literally lose all of our, or half of our police department at one time and still be able to function without costing the city money, any more than what we already have. Those officers that would be contaminated for any reason or were to contract this disease, they are covered under, according to the FOP who sent out, was Andrea Johan, they are covered under the FMLA for COVID-19 for sick leave, which does not cost the city any money whatsoever. So if we lost half of our department, we could still function and not cost the city any additional. And worst-case scenario, though, in the event that we would get down to have three or four officers only available, we do have mutual aid agreements with other departments that have already been in place. Again, that does not cost the city any additional funding. And again, I guess at a, at a truly, truly doomsday scenario, we could call on the State Highway Patrol for help. They would send troopers in to help us with that, or of course, the governor could, the governor could do the, the National Guard. So as it stands right now, there is no reason to believe that, that was my wife calling, by the way. So, there is no reason to believe at this point that we cannot serve the community from a law enforcement perspective. From a, from the medical side, we always stand ready to support the firefighters, EMS, and also Besiris Community Hospital. We've been in a support role up to this point. We are working well with little-to-no previous policies or procedures in place. We've been creating these as we go, but we have also taken care of what needs to be taken care of. And currently, I also sit on the, the EMA, Crawford County EMA Board, as well as, I'm the Public Information Officer on the EOC Board. So any information that I'm gathering from those boards immediately go back to Chief Kepke, so that this, he has the current information. I will say, under his leadership, Chief was very quick about establishing our policies that have protected us. And again, I go back to, there is absolutely, it's unreasonable to assume at this point that your police department would be cut down to a doomsday scenario where we would have to call in the National Guard. It's just totally unreasonable at this point. So I would yield to any questions. Thank you.
Yeah, I have, have you looked at any of the other agencies around the country that have had, and I think, as far as I know, it was only the large cities that had any large numbers of officers getting infected and having to be off of work. Was there any smaller cities that got hit on the first wave that you're aware of?
No, Mr. President. I have not heard of any smaller agencies, and specifically, I try to, I guess, pay attention to our locality and understand what we have, the number of COVID-19 cases we have locally, and how it has affected our police department. But up to this point, absolutely, there has been, and again, I'm terribly sorry, I should've prefaced everything I said with, I'm speaking on behalf of the FOP and of the Besiris Police Department. That I would refer you to Chief Kepke. But with that having been said, there is no record that I can think of that somebody has had any kind of a doomsday scenario where the law enforcement has not been able to do the job that they've been able, needed to do at that point. Mr. President, go ahead. Mr. President, go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, I think it would be a good idea to maybe look at some of the other, you know, around the country. There was some departments that were hit. See how long it took for them to recover and, you know, what kind of things they did to adapt to that. But, um, does anybody else have any questions?
I do, Mr. President.
Yeah, go ahead, Kevin.
I'm trying to wrap my head around it. Maybe, you know, Mr. Walker, Mr. Hershey, and Mr. Heiner can give me their opinions on this, too. Are we being asked to come up with a financial plan? Are we being asked to come up with an operational plan, or both?
Well, that's kind of the question that I had, because the mayor's letter, he wasn't very clear in there as far as what he sent to us, because he did mix a bunch of financial stuff in with it.
Yeah, I was confused.
Yeah, I was too, Lisa. And the reason I'm asking that question is, I guess, if I could just state my opinion, I think that each individual department head, so the police chief, the fire chief, and then whatever department head for each, you know.
Streets.
They're going to look at their own budgets. They're going to determine where they can make cuts. You know, the administration works with them on that. You know, we approved the budget back, you know, in October, November, but I guess financially, I don't see that as our role at this point. I see each department head working with the administration on what they can trim out of their budget. And then operationally, I think the same thing would come into play, that each leader of those departments is going to come up with their response plans. So I'm just curious, what do we feel that our needed role is here? I'd like to try to define that.
Mr. President, if I may, to Mr. Myers.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, briefly, Kevin. The letter that was given to us, I think you all have received a copy of Lodge 68's response to the Safety Service Director. The letter that was provided to us basically says they want to have a pandemic preparedness plan to the administration, of course, by Friday, or, excuse me, April 24th, 2020 at noon. It's basically what he's requesting of us is your plan will explain how your department will continue serving the community if your workforce would drop a large portion, and there would be a, there would not be a civil service meeting or test. He does not mention anything to the unions, the fraternal organizations, to work within the budget or to create an economic, or advise economically. I would say that, again, as we've already pointed out, everything we have doesn't cost the city a dime, nothing. Even at a worst-case drastic scenario where we've lost 16 of our officers, they're all going to be on FMLA if they are contaminated. So that's not costing the city any money. And, of course, the response itself is not going to cost the city any money. So, I hope that answers your question, Mr. Myers. At this point, we were just asked to cover the response.
Yeah, and I, I'm glad that we're all talking together. I think that's important. You know, and maybe it's just letting them outline their plan and then giving it to us to review is almost where I feel like I see our role. I don't know that we need to reinvent the wheel and come up with what each individual department head and department's going to be doing.
Absolutely. Each department's going to know better than we are what.
Yeah, they're the experts. We're not.
Yeah.
Well, I think this, the mayor, when he sent these letters out, maybe he needed to clarify it a little bit better as far as what he was asking of us, or maybe he didn't even think we were going to group together and even attempt to come up with a plan, and that we were just going to throw it back at him and say, "We're clueless. You do whatever you want." But I felt that we should at least do something, because he threw it in our lap, basically. So, and maybe we should have had a committee like this set up two months ago. But it sounds like the first wave is already over, and thank God that it turned out the way it did, and we didn't really have any issues. But I think we at least need to have something. And I like what Mr. Walker is pointing out with the mutual aid agreements that are already in place, because it sounds like there's absolutely no cost there at all to be by the city. And if that's the case, then that would already be at a better financial move than the alternative suggestion of hiring all these part-time was. And I also wanted to point out, I had a discussion with somebody today that they evaluate fire departments and stuff, and it was a third-party neutral guy. And he pointed the fact out, and I never, I never even realized this, that full-time people that do the jobs that they do and work together with the group of people that they work together with on a daily basis can actually, you can actually do more with those three to four people, those full-time people than five to six part-time, because the part-time, they're not, they might not be used to working with the other people on their shift. And, you know, if that's the case, then is the part-time really saving you money?
I had that same conversation with him this morning, and I agree with you and agree with how he said that. And I'm glad that we were able to, you know, I hadn't put that part of the puzzle or that part of the equation yet until he brought it up that way, and that's good.
Yeah, but as far as this committee and getting into the financial stuff, I'm not, I wasn't really keen on that. I mean, I think that's something, I mean, we should probably leave the finance committee handle. But at minimum, I'd like to just at least meet the request that the mayor gave us of, you know, coming up with a preparedness plan.
Mr. President, would it be out of line for us to toss the ball back into their court and say, hey, you know, because he did mention in the meeting Tuesday that they already met with some department heads, and I had asked if we were going to have that information shared with us. Let's send it back to them and say, "Can you share some of your plan with us? That way, we're at least having this discussion." If nothing else, we.
Their plan as far as a preparedness plan or their plan of the financial side?
Well, that was the financial.
Yeah, as far as I know, they haven't had any discussions on the preparedness side. It was just some financial discussion with the department heads on Monday as far as taking some stuff out of each of those budgets. But.
I did, Joyce posted. I didn't understand where they came from, but I did see the numbers Joyce posted.
Are you talking about the half a million dollars that Joyce came up with?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, she was supposed to get a breakdown of that and get it to us.
Mr. President.
Does anybody, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. President. We haven't heard from the fire department. I'd really like to hear from Mr. Hershey if he's able to state what, like, Mr. Walker stated.
Yeah, are you there, Mr. Hershey?
Yeah, I'm here. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, I hear you.
Okay. As far as the fire department goes, I sat down with the chief of the department and talked to him. In the fire department, all right, we would work under normal operating conditions. That's pre-COVID-19. In normal operating conditions, what we did was broke it down into four different phases. And I have a, I have it drawn out on a board, but we broke it down into four different phases. Phase 1 is normal operations. Phase 2 would be a high-risk operation is what we're operating, what we're classifying, what we're operating in now. We're at a higher risk. We're doing the social distancing. We have an SOG in place that provides guys the information on, you know, what level of protection to be in according to the risk, how to decon. We've gone through deconning procedures. We do have some PPE. I would, I would say that, you know, there's a logistics side to this that we need to work yet for the future. But what we're operating in now, we have SOGs in place to operate at that level. It's when we go to the next level, it becomes a little more different. As with the police department, we have mutual aid agreements with other cities. However, in these operations, it can get a little, it can get a little more tricky for the fire department. So, what we classified, and I can show you guys in a breakdown, a drawing of this out, but we classified as Phase 3, which would be an increase in transport of patients. And that would be because we are not the primary care provider that transports patients. So if we seen a significant increase in transports, that would be a trigger to be able to do some things that would help cover that. And then we would, we would increase our manning by bringing guys on and paying overtime. And then we would take our squad and house it in a different location so that we kept our squad operations separate from our firefighting operations that would prevent contamination, cross-contaminating between the two, so we could continue to provide that fire service and then have that increased EMS service as well. Now, when I say that it would increase the overtime, that's FEMA reimburses overtime for this situation. There's actually paperwork that shows how FEMA will pay for it. The, as I did the breakdown through FEMA, if you have a squad that's doing COVID-19 operations for 24-hour period, whether it's doing transports or not, it generates $988.32 for the day. So that squad gets paid to sit still. The manning that you bring in and pay the overtime for, FEMA will pay up to $720 an hour for the overtime. So we would incur a cost, but through the reimbursement through FEMA, it would, like the police department, we would break even. So there would be no, you would not incur a cost. You would, but then through the FEMA, you get the reimbursement. The tricky thing with that is, is you just can't declare a COVID-19, "Oh, we got an emergency and we're going to start providing care." There has to be some things in place that would trigger that. And in our town, thankfully, we are not there. All right, we don't have an increase in run. We don't have an increase in cases like they do down in Marion. I don't know if anybody's looked at the way Marion City is running now, but that's how they done it. They broke it down and they separated a squad. They put it in an outside location, and they kept those guys away from their firefighting operations, and they handled just the COVID-19 cases. I have talked to Marion, and they are doing the FEMA reimbursement for their operations. So that was one way to handle that situation if we have a massive outbreak in our town. The other equation that comes into that is if we have sick members within our fire department. We do have mutual aid agreements with the other towns. However, those mutual aid agreements don't run day-to-day operations. It would be more, I would consider that more for firefighting operations, because if it's bad here, then it's bad with who we have the mutual aid agreements with. So what we kind of determined is the trigger for that is if we have sick members in our department and that number is at least a quarter of our department that is symptom, has the COVID symptoms, then that would be a trigger as well to set the plan in place. And again, because of that, it is reimbursable through FEMA. So again, it keeps the cost to, you know, not incurring a cost to the city.
Is FEMA reimbursing on the fire side as well as the EMS side?
FEMA will reimburse you, no, FEMA will reimburse you for equipment used. FEMA will reimburse you for overtime incurred, and FEMA will reimburse you for apparatus used. So the squad would be an apparatus used. So if it's put into that role of doing COVID transport and it's separated from, that's where you would collect the $988.32 an hour, or not an hour, I'm sorry, per 24-hour period. And then the manning.
Do you have any idea how many runs a day that Marion County is doing with that COVID response dedicated drug?
I do not. As I understand it, the majority of their sick people are inside the prison, and they are, they have done separation and stuff inside of there. Whatever they're doing, I think it's mainly shelter in place at the prison. So I don't know how much of an increase in runs they've seen. At the time when I contacted them, it wasn't that many.
But they only have one dedicated squad for that, right?
I do believe they only have one dedicated squad for that.
Are they staffing it with multiple different departments?
They have guys that are assigned to the apparatus. If you go on Marion Fire Department, let's see, oh, it was an article in the Marion Star is where I got some of my information from, and then talking to them. It's marionstar.com. They have some information there on an article. So I printed that out. We kind of got a binder going with information in it. Now that, when we have a sick member, and again, I say, you know, we kind of broke it down into phase lines. If we have three sick members in a department, then that's a quarter of our department. And as right now, we only, you know, we have a limited number of members in the department that would require us to bring everybody in and basically work 24-hour operations out of the, out of the, out of the fire department. But again, you have to keep the members separated. You have some guys that would do firefighting operations and some guys that would just do the COVID transport. With that being said, again, you have a reduction in your force. When you have a reduction in your force, it limits your ability to fight fire. So then that's where our mutual aid agreements would come into effect. I would be hesitant to call anybody into our city for mutual aid agreements to do COVID transport. I would try to do that with our members, because I wouldn't want them to take it back to our town, their town, and contaminate their members as well. So it's, again, social distancing even within our departments, I think, would be.
Yeah. And so there was two fires that Besiris Fire, Besiris Fire Department responded to today, right?
Yes, we deployed our ladder tower to Galleon for mutual aid. And we left station at approximately 9:00 this morning and come back on station and was back in service right around 5:30 this evening. And then we had a fire call in town that the callback manpower responded to, as well as medical as well.
The fire department is kind of two-fold. The, the fire department is kind of twofold because there's the EMS side and the fire side potentially. And, um, uh, as far as the fire side, if you had only half the members available due to quarantine, how would, you know, and how would that affected like a day like today with the two fires there? And so then I, you know, I can see the whole, the part-time, why that was initially thrown out there, but then I, at the same time, I see all kinds of issues with the part-time and like one here, the whole, you can't just add part-time guys because you got to buy gear for these guys. And there's, I'm hearing it is a possibility of getting fitted turnout gear could be a three-month wait for a part-time guy. And you know, then there's the cost of that gear, but to, to just, if we had an outbreak in the Bussaras Fire Department next week, you can't, you can't even fix that problem with part-time anyway because of the turnout gear situation taking so long to get ordered in. So I don't think that the part-time plan ever really made a lot of sense, honestly. I mean, I, I see issues with it like that, that it would totally be unable to be deployed. You can't send somebody into a house fire that doesn't have gear.
And much like the police department, we have mutual aid agreements. And those mutual aid agreements, uh, with the, the towns, um, that is where when you come into firefighting operations, they are outfitted with the gear and we do work with them. Um, we, we work with, um, Crestline and, and Galleon as the full-time departments. And I think that we may want to review our mutual aid agreements and, and look at, at how, you know, we, we operate. I mean, we have agreements with the townships as well. It's, you know, so there is the availability to do the work. I just would caution bringing anybody into the town and then sending them back to where they came from, um, in, in, in the capacity that we work in because you're possibly exposing people and then sending them out and doing exactly what we're trying not to do and you're cross contaminating between communities.
Well, and Greg, to that point, there's some departments that are not allowing their employees to work any of their part-time jobs during this pandemic for that very reason.
Uh, that is correct. Um, there are some departments that have, uh, had their guys not work their part-time jobs, um, or part-time, they're not allowing part-times employees into the department because they're not knowing where the part-time employees coming from. So they may be the one doing the cross contaminating, working multiple jobs. So it, it, it's a, it's a difficult situation no matter how you look at it.
Does anybody else have any questions? Okay, well, it sounds to me like between the fire and the police, we already had mutual aid agreements that at least for the short term can, uh, fulfill any need that we may have. I, I'd still, I'd still like to see something, you know, for a potential second wave in the fall that was a little bit more detailed out, but, um,
Mr. President, I don't, I'm, I'm sorry. I would like to, that, um, we have identified some, some needs and, uh, logistically some things that we could prepare for that, uh, you know, would, would leave us better prepared uh, for the, the second wave if it was to come and if it was to be, uh, as bad as it was projected. There are some things that we need to do logistically because, uh, let's be honest, nobody really seen this coming. And so it's hard to prepare for something, you know, like that. The level of equipment and the type of equipment that we needed for that is just not something that we would normally stockpile at the level of what we would have needed had it gone as bad as it did.
Are you talking about PPE?
Uh, yeah, PPE, the, the, uh, the, the masks, um, you know, the, the surgical masks for the, you know, the, the patients, there's some, some EMS stock that we would need. Uh, also, if you're going to run an ambulance, if it's bad enough that we're increasing the amount of transports that we're doing here in this department, we may need to look at where could we lease, uh, get loaned a second ambulance or even purchase a second ambulance so that, um, you know, we could outfit that ambulance and utilize it as well. Unfortunately, when you go through decon procedures on an ambulance, it's takes approximately uh, an, an hour and 20 to an hour and 30 minutes to decon it and put it back into service. That's just the CDC's recommendation of decon procedures. It's a lengthy procedure and, you know, you don't want to wait to get that squad back into service. You would rather, if you could rotate squad to squad, you could have a decon team or it, there's multiple ways you could do it, but I think you may need to look at, you know, where would we get a second squad from?
Well, and Mr. President? Yeah, go ahead. To that point, Greg, I know that, uh, Acting Chief Swamley has come up with a, uh, a grant through, I believe USDA that covered, um, and I don't remember the percent, but our cost to, to purchase a brand new ambulance would be around $8,000 and the USDA is about a hundred. So much like we did on the engine, we could, we could, you know, buy another brand new ambulance now and you do that, you space that out over five years, like, you know, for ten, and that's going to, you know, make that $20,000 a year. I think the same program exists where your first payment wouldn't even be due till next year. You know, and I don't know if that needs to go over to finance committee at some point or, you know, that's something to consider discussing.
Mr. President, I have one other thing, if I may.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Walker.
Thank you. Um, I was provided a letter from, uh, Jacqueline Keegan. And since we're on this topic of preparedness readiness for future, um, uh, can I, if you don't mind and bear with me for just a moment, I want to read this letter. Uh, it's, it's addressed to the ad hoc committee and it says, "Dear members, as a business owner, our safety service forces are very important. It appears the community feels the same way since they approved the safety forces levy. I had heard Mayor Andrew Ginter of Columbus State, we will not be laying off his frontline workers at this time. The city of Columbus had a safety levy in which every year they set aside a certain percentage for emergency safety fund and the city also has their general emergency fund as well. Does the city of Bussaras set aside any safety forces levy money for an emergency fund for our safety forces?" That was a direct question. Um, since our community has supported the safety forces, could we, could you set aside 10% of that levy for an emergency safety force fund? Our police department is down to full-time officers and we have two officers in the schools, which is reduced from our streets. The schools do pay for half the officer and I'm sure the fire department is not at full staff. We do currently have a civil service exam and list to hire from if needed for addition, or do we have, I'm sorry, it was a direct question. Do we currently have a civil service exam and list to hire from if needed for additional safety forces? Some of you may not be aware that our police officers are not allowed to take any vacation or personal time off because it caused overtime and the city not can, cannot pay overtime at this time because we do not have enough officers to cover without creating you overtime. The stress of our officers is bad enough, let alone the additional stress of knowing you cannot take a day off if you need it. If the city's budget is strong now, then let's strengthen our safety forces and prepare for, prepare our safety forces for a fund, for a fund in the future. And it's signed sincerely Jacqueline Keegan, insurance agent and wife of a police officer. For those of you that don't know, that's, uh, Detective Keegan's wife. I guess I would also say that we need to add on to this, um, in a future preparedness plan, that it would probably be wise if every two years we do a, uh, safety service exam as opposed to waiting till we're behind the eight ball. I believe the cost incurred, occurred in that or accrued in that is approximately $2,000. It could be less or a little more, but $2,000 every two years to have an active test for which we can hire police and firefighters, uh, does not seem like it's a lot of money to me. You know, when you're talking a $5 million budget and, uh, not to mention to be prepared, if that's ultimately the goal, if that's really the request that's being made of us here to come up with a plan, I would say that being able to have those tests readily available and constantly active that we can hire off of is something that should be considered. Thank you very much.
Okay, so to answer the first question, as far as is there any, any money set aside out of the safety forces levy? I'm 99.9% certain that there is not because the safety force levy does not even bring in enough money to fully staff the safety forces. It, it, the safety force funds have to be supplemented from general funds in addition to what's brought in on the safety force levy. Now, that's not saying that maybe we shouldn't reevaluate that and maybe making, maybe another line item in the budget and dedicate some money off the side in a separate fund. But then the other thing, and I, and I agree with you, the, the civil service, I've, I've been saying this for six months now. Uh, why, why is there not an active civil service list to hire from? For when, I mean, you, even COVID, COVID just makes the situation worse, but you could have, you know, I just, I just throw out there, let's say you have two line of duty deaths at the same time because of a tragedy type call and you're already down before that, you have no way to replace anybody. There's, I don't know how long it takes to get the civil service test done, but it seems to me like there should always be a active list in place so that we don't get caught. Cause basically right now, I, I would say that we are behind the eight ball, like you said, and we're trying to play catch-up. And, um, you know, I, I mentioned that I brought it up in January about the, the civil service test and
What's the matter, BB?
I, I just, I, I disagree with the mayor. The mayor, the mayor will tell you that the fire department is fully staffed, but I disagree because 15 years ago, that fire department had close to 20 some members on it and I've just watched it go continually go down and down and down over the last 15 years. And if he's saying that it's not understaffed now, then he's basically saying that 15 years ago, it was overstaffed, which I don't agree with. So, um, if it's only a couple thousand dollars to do a civil service test every couple of years, I can think of a lot of other places where the city has wasted way more money than that.
I, I think Mr. Walker's point, Mr. President, uh, maybe we can refer that, um, at the next council meeting back to health and safety and I'm, I'm all right legislating that, that we, uh, mandate that we, we always maintain a current list every two years.
Yeah, cause while you, you, let's say you had a, a death in either of the safety forces right now due to COVID. You cannot replace that employee right now.
Or any other time for another reason.
Yeah. Or anything, you could, you could have a guy, you know, get hit driving his car off duty and he's out, you know? So
If I may, Mr. President, just interrupt for just a moment. The last I checked with Officer Carver, I'm sure many of you know who I'm speaking of, the one who broke his back, uh, doing the SWAT detail. At this stage, it's very, very unclear as whether he's ever going to be able to come back or not. Um, so I would just say at some point, we may have another vacancy that we're going to have to fill. And it goes back to we're behind the eight ball. You know, we're going to be six months behind trying to get somebody to fill that spot where if we had, and I'm sure the fire department, if they got the go-ahead to hire people, they would love to have an active test that we could just pull off of and say, um, you know, Mr. McKeever, you're next on the list, come on up and, you know, let's get you started. Thank you, sorry.
Um, Excuse me, Mr. President. Yeah, um, also in the fire department, we would appreciate that an active list was maintained. Uh, we've had members retire here recently and, uh, within the last year and we have not replaced them. We have another member that's going to retire and I don't foresee, you know, him being replaced either. And we passed the safety forces levy in order to maintain manning and we have failed to maintain manning in the fire department. So I don't know where we go from there, but an active list would at least give us the opportunity, you know, to, to hire the, the people that, uh, you know, we, we said we were going to maintain.
Yeah, and I, 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 council can legislate, I think, that a list has to be, or the civil service test has to be done by X date every, every so many years or something. And that may be something that council can look into and maybe at the next council meeting, somebody can refer that to be done, but, um,
Absolutely will.
I mean, because you're not, you can run the test and you don't have to hire anybody. You can just let the test sit there until you need it. So we're not obligated to hire just because we conducted a civil service test. But, um, does anybody else have any questions, comments?
Uh, IFF, um, would like to add a little more thing. I agree with, uh, Mr. Myers that we do have the USDA grant out there for a squad and a cot. Uh, I don't know where that is in the process on, uh, on approval to go ahead with the, the USDA grant, but also just here in the month of April, uh, the SAFER grant has opened up. And that SAFER grant allows for the hiring of manpower. Now this year, this go-around on the SAFER grant is a little different than it had been in the past. There's more restrictions on it. So it is a little different. It pays out a little different, but it's good for three years and it'll pay for 75% of the cost incurred for the manning that you hire. In the first year, it'll pay for 75% of the cost of the manning that you incur in the second year. And then in the third year, it pays for 35% of the cost of that manning as well. Uh, it can be
Is there a limit to?
Can be renewed.
How many, how much manpower can that grant go up to?
It's what you can, it's what you can justify for.
Did they say when the deadline was on that?
Um, May 15th and they will award, starting July, they'll start awarding the grants. And then you can hire starting one July. I have an offer on the table.
Is the acting chief working on, working on that or?
Um, yes, we, we are working on, uh, filling out for the grant. I did talk to him about that, at what level of manning that we are filling it out for. I, I'm unclear on yet.
So, so if we get the grant, we can't hire anybody because there's no civil service test?
That would be correct. And the grant is from the inception on July the first, it starts. In the past, it was the grant went in place then from the day to hire for three years. This goes in, in July, so if you, you get it, your money is available in July. If you don't use it, you don't get it. It's when you hire the people that you start getting the, the money for it. So it's, it's basically a use or lose type of deal.
So it sounds to me like because of grants and stuff that might be opening up and there might even be more coming down the road, depending on what Depending on what the, uh. Uh, federal or the. The coming down on the federal level, we, it sounds like we need to be ready in case there is some grant money available and. Our biggest issue right now is no, no civil service test, so I, I would almost say that. Maybe something that comes out of, at least the meeting today is. Notice to back to counsel that. A civil service test might have to be done and. Counsel has to legislate it because the administration won't. Do it, then. Counsel might need to look into that.
Mr. President, I have a question if I may for both Mr. Walker and Mr. Hershey, I know. That we are able to subcontract out the physical agility portions of the test if we so chose to. Do we also possess the ability to, to subcontract out the written portion, or are we required to give that onsite locally?
Mr. Myers, we use the National Testing Network. We're already contracted with them. So all we'd have to do is contact them to set, to set, to set the test up.
For written and for physical?
Physical test is performed by Detective Keegan and I believe three other, uh, Officer Dorsey. We have our own standards that we use, uh, they're the national, but they do the testing right there.
Okay.
And that, that, that testing is at no cost to the city regarding them putting it on. Those guys go out there and do that on their own time.
Okay.
Is, is it avail, is it a possibility that the, the test can be done? Like not at city hall, like maybe out at. I'm just gonna suggest maybe at the fairgrounds, at the youth building or something, just because they've got a wider room in there and maybe. Everybody can be set up. Six feet apart. I, I mean, is there a requirement that the test be done at city hall?
We currently do ours at the, uh, the high school. Uh, they have a weight repair and it's plenty big enough for. I, I'll be quite frank with you, I don't know what the fire department has experienced up to this, but the last test, round of testing we did. We had three open positions. And we only had six applicants that qualified. So. Yeah, it's a sad, sad reality, but, um. But with that having been said. There shouldn't be a problem doing that because even if we, I mean, from our perspective. Even if we were to, uh, do the physical testing, if we had a hundred and twenty applicants. We could separate them over the course of the three day period. We would, trust me, if we had the people and the money, we would definitely find a way to make it happen.
Okay, I, I'm just gonna, um.
Can I ask one quick question, Mr. President?
Yeah, go ahead.
I hate to interrupt and talk on a committee that I'm not part of, but, um, with the, the, the actual test part of this, not the agility or anything. Um, is there any way? I know like with, uh, licensing for a lot of professional things and, uh, insurance being one of those. Um, they use offsite testing facilities. Or you can actually do, um, or. The exam portion of your license before you actually take the state exam, you can do proctor exams where you can do them on the computer. Um, with another person actually acting as the proctor that's a third party person that's not. You've got anything to gain or lose, is there a way to do? The civil service exam where you could do it online and have a, a proctor that would, you know, sign off the waiver that they watched you take it without. Studying or any of that, and could we do it that way?
Mr. Fode, if I may?
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Walker.
Absolutely.
The, uh, the National Testing Network, it's all done online, uh, with a proctor.
Thank you. Okay. Um.
I'm actually, I was actually scheduled to take a test in Shelby. Um, with a proctor and it's kind of like it's a CPIM test. And they've offered it available to me just, just in the last two weeks online. At home. But if there is any noise, including my dogs or a doorbell or anything, I immediately fail the test. So I don't know, they may have changed the rules.
I don't think you do very well, will you, Lisa?
No, I don't know where to take my kid or my dogs.
Yeah, um. Not to change, uh, not to change the subject here, but, um. We did also invite, uh, the Ask Me Union and they did send a rep here, and I know that the mayor or the administration had not specifically. Sent them a letter to my knowledge, asking them about any manpower issues. And staffing levels, but, um, I'm gonna. Give Mr. Tyner an opportunity to say anything if, if, if he, uh. As far as. Any comment, did you, did you have anything as far as? You know, manpower. Reference, um. Your guys' stuff?
And first of all, for you don't know me, I'm Kevin Tyner, I'm Vice President of the Ask Me Union. Um. Now, for the most part, a lot of ours between the service garage and the water distribution, the distribution garage, we can. Uh, help each other out when we fall short on people, so we can cover each other where it really matters. Is your water treatment plant and your wastewater treatment plant, because not just anybody can go into those and do those jobs. You know, um. You have licensed operators in the water distribution. You have licensed operators in the water, uh, treatment process and the wastewater treatment process. Uh, they're all different licenses. Uh. So when you got. The water treatment plant, you know, that's real critical to make sure we're providing safe drinking water. For our citizens in town. Um, I talked to Chad Slegel today and it's under my understanding that they have actually. Went, the, the service director went to Galleon and they have a mutual aid agreement, I guess, with Galleon on running the plants if they would need it. Uh, there's no such plan as of right now with the wastewater treatment plant. Uh. Ohio EPA. Back at the first of March sent, uh, email out to every licensed operator in the state of Ohio, whether it's. Uh, water treatment, wastewater or water distribution. And asked for volunteers to be put on a list. To fill in these positions in case you get hit at a. City where their water plants go down, you know, or a big infection at a water plant or a wastewater plant. Um, I don't know, I have not heard or seen what kind of. Volunteers they got for that list. Um, but they did do it. So there are. Things out there that we can make sure that we're still getting those done. Um. You know, there's some, I heard. I think it was Finley. They went, uh, kind of to the max, they were not allowing their employees to leave the plant. They are staying at the plant. Um, which is, uh, to the extreme side of the situation, I think. Uh, but, uh. You know, when it comes to everyday pickup and trash and that, that can be filled in if you have. Guys sick. That have to be out. There's ways to, to fill those where it's gonna leave you short somewhere else. But it's been done, it happens. All the time, you know, covering those other departments, so. Uh, the big ones, like I said, are, you're gonna be. If something were to happen at one of the two plants. So, uh, like I, and.
Uh, as far as the civil service test related to the Ask Me employees, um. Is there just one test that covers? All of those?
No, there's not, um. The general laborers test would cover water distribution, um. Sanitation. Uh, sewers and drains and street department. Um, when it comes to the. Plants, they have operators tests. Which they gave the operators test. Uh, I guess it was a little over a year ago because they had to hire an operator. Uh, one of the guys went from the water treatment plant to the wastewater plant when Terry Spiegel left. Uh. So they have that list and it's still good. Um, and we actually had a water treatment plant operator who is leaving in July. At this point, they're not filling that position because of the uncertainty of what's going on with COVID.
So the, the test, the, the, the most recent test was an operator test?
Correct, that was done, uh, I would say. A, a year ago, about a year ago this time.
Is that the same deal or it's good for two years or?
They're good for two years, correct.
Uh, when was the last time a general laborer?
They were scheduled to do one. Here in April and it was canceled. Because of everything that's happened.
Okay. Well, it sounds, it sounds to me like. As far as the safety forces side. We need to be looking at possibly having these. Civil service tests. Done here like. Rather quickly as far as. Having an available list, um. To hire from. On those, so. That, that's my biggest. Takeout from this. Ad hoc committee at this, at this point. Does anybody else have any thoughts on that?
I agree with you.
Okay.
I do too.
What, what's? What's your thoughts on if the ad hoc committee would a, at this time, maybe? Out of this meeting here. Come up with a decision to. Recommend that the administration look into getting these. Or recommend that. I guess we take this back to counsel. Coming straight out of this committee, but. Um. Recommending to counsel that. We are severely. Behind the eight ball here by not having these civil service tests active right now to hire from and, um. That they may imminently need to have, have those done. Does anybody have any? Thought on maybe?
I guess a marvelous idea, I do want to ask, uh. Mr. Tyner. Do you feel that, and I know with, with. Some of your guys' positions, they're a little more specific for each time that you have to give a test, but is there? Is there a need to also have an active list for, for any of your positions, or is it not quite as big a deal as it is for the safety forces?
Well, you know, it's nice that there is an active list because what we've run into is the same thing that police and fire have. When. You don't, uh, when somebody leaves, okay, leaves. You don't, you might be two, three months, four months before you fill the position. And so you got, uh, you know, what it always ends up usually working out is. You're short a guy on trash. Because everybody, that's usually the start job, you work your way off that job, bid out to another department. So what you're doing is. Eventually, when you've got this person in street department, you're constantly pulling somebody out of the street department or the sewers and drains department to. To throw trash. So you're, you're hurting other departments in this meantime, when you're waiting to, this three months to give the test and hire somebody.
So, so maybe just having a general laborer active list, uh, constantly would be just as handy to you guys?
It, I think, I think for the city it would be handy, I mean.
That's, yeah, that's what I'm getting at, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, just for, I mean, the administration, so now they're not, you know, shorthanded, you know? Not only we have a water, uh. Operator leaving this year, we also just lost our utility maintenance man. Right when this all went through, so now they're gonna need to. Event, when this cycle's through, they're gonna need to. Give the utility maintenance. Test. If. Nobody from any unions, uh, bids or is qualified for that job, which. That's what the case was last time is one person bid it, they pulled out there with their bid. And they ended up having to wait three months to give the test, because I don't know what the actual notice is, but it ends up being like. You gotta give notice for, you're gonna give the test, you're gonna hand out applications, it's like thirty days, I think. The application process. And then it's another. Two, three weeks, it seems like after that, I don't know the actual. Uh, numbers on that, but by the time you're done, it's usually three months, maybe four months.
Kurt.
Which will be right when the second wave potentially hits.
Kurt.
Yeah, go ahead, Lisa.
Is it possible that we have a piece of legislation that just states? The civil service exam is going to be given on like such and such state every other year? And then we just know it's done, there's no way to do that?
Um. I, I, I think counsel can. Pass legislation that would mandate that a civil service test. Has to be done. At X number of time or by X number of time. You know, and it's something we'll have to run by the law director, but, um.
Yeah, I, I would suggest.
I, I see no reason why it, I, I, I see no reason why we can't. Have legislation that requires that.
Yeah, I would suggest, Mr. President, that we ask the question, can we just say that there will always be an active list? That way we're not specifying a date. And. If we just say for, for police, fire and general labor, that there's always an active list available, I think that.
And how do we know that that will be maintained?
Well, I think that becomes a function of, you know, the service committee and the health and safety committee to. Somehow remember, and I, I know we have to protect ourselves from our future selves here. Uh, to know how to. To police that, and I, I, I'm sure that's something we can all come up with an idea.
I just figured if there were a date, it would eliminate all the. Emergencies, or at least a lot of them.
For the immediate future, for the next few years, I'm sure there's enough of us that will always be making sure it's taken care of, but yeah, I, I think we need to find a way to make it foolproof, you know, go on five, 10. Years out into the future.
So if, if this committee, if this ad hoc committee recommended. That a civil service test. If we recommended back to counsel that a civil service test always be kept and especially right now. And then the administration comes back and says, well, you can't have one right now because of COVID. Um. Is, is that necessarily from the other discussion we had about the testing and being able to do them? Is that even a concern that the administration can throw that? Back out there and say that? Or are we confident that? Testing can be done?
That'd be something we'd have to check into, I'm sure, to even make sure that they have the availability to take a test right now.
I mean, because there's gotta be other cities in the state that. Have to be hired right now.
Online?
Okay, yeah, I remember.
I'm sorry, what's that?
You said we could do the test online, the civil service exam, so. I don't see how they could say that you couldn't do it if you can, that's applying social distancing.
It's just the physical part of the test that can't be done online, so.
Right. The, uh, the national, again, if you're using the National Testing Network, they schedule a time and a date that you can go in and you're in a, a room with a, uh. You know, with somebody to watch over you, obviously, and, uh, you go in, you take the test, I would assume they would make some sort of recommendations for social distancing. I am not aware that they've canceled their testing process.
Okay, I, I would be, I would be happy if this ad hoc committee at this time. Just sent notice back to counsel that we recommend maybe that a civil, that these civil service tests be done. If anybody wants to make.
Question for Mr. Hershey.
Go ahead.
Greg, I know with what, uh. Mr. Walker's talking about, you know, through the National Testing Network. And, and are we also on the fireside currently utilizing, you know, CPAT or anything like that for written or physical agility?
Uh, no, we are not, uh, we do our civil service test. Um, can it be done? Um. There are other departments out there that use it, we, we currently do. You know, the, the traditional civil service exam, we've done our civil service exam. Uh, here in the fire department, we've done it at other locations. You know, I mean, it has been done. Uh, of the last civil service exam we gave. I think we had. Oh. Close to sixty people that took the test. Um. So that was, we had a good turnout the last test we gave. But to answer your question, no, we do a traditional civil service as of.
Okay, and the reason I ask was, you know, for, for the CPAT test, for, I know there's several departments in central Ohio and, and west central Ohio that utilize this. Where they, and it would take the test one time. And they could. Utilize that physical agility test for multiple departments rather than having to go and take. Twenty different tests to apply to twenty different departments, they can take the test one time, so I don't know if that's something that we need to. Ask Mrs. Hilgrith about, or, or if that has to go through each of your departments, I don't know what the, the right routine is for that, but I'd like to look into it.
Uh, yeah, I would defer that to the, uh, to the chief of the department. Um. Um. We is, you know, not opposed. To it, um. You know, it's nice. There, there are pros and cons. To both, but, uh. You know.
I'm thinking maybe just making an option that way, if we do run into a roadblock because, you know, with, with city hall being shut down and things, if, if that's an obstacle, now we've got another avenue that we can pursue should we need it.
Absolutely. Absolutely, but I don't, I, you know, I don't foresee the, uh, you know, the world being shut down for. Um. You know, another two months or.
Yeah, I hope you're right.
So, but, yeah, it, 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 it is an option. Um, but again, I, I defer to the. Chief of the department.
So. I, I, for as far as a short term. Uh. Thing out of this committee. Um. You know, the, 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 the full response plan, I think it's gonna take a, a little while to, to come up with and we got time for that, but. As far as in the immediate time. I think we need to send notice back. To council that we recommend out of this committee that they at least start looking into getting these civil service tests done.
Yeah, I mean, you could schedule it now for two months down the road. Where like Mr. Hershey says, we believe that we should hopefully be.
Yeah, because I think it's gotta be advertised for at least thirty days or something before the test and. All that and by then, you know, we could be. Semi back to normal. But, um. If anybody wants to, um. Unless anybody has any other discussion, I'd. I'd be okay with somebody making a motion to. Send that recommendation for the short timeframe here or the immediate. Back to the. Counsel out of this ad hoc committee.
So moved from Mr. Myers.
Hey, we got a, um. We got a motion by Mr. Myers.
I believe Lisa seconded.
Oh, she's muted. Let me unmute her here.
Second.
She's on. Okay, we got it, uh. Seconded by Lisa. Um. And then the only ones that can vote are Kevin, Lisa, Mark, so. Go ahead with the roll call vote, Mr. Hill.
Myers?
Yes.
All set?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
All right, so we'll, we'll send that back here to the council for the. At least short term that came out of this committee. And does anybody else have any discussion for this committee?
I would just like to say thank you all for allowing us to sit on it and, uh, I have to excuse myself. I have another meeting I'm gonna go to. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom and Greg.
Hi, Tom.
Yeah, hey, I want to thank everybody for coming, uh, the FOP, IAFF and, uh, Ask Me. Because these are the people that are. Protecting our city and, um. We appreciate what they do. So unless there's anything else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved from Myers.
Seconded, McKeever.
By Kevin, I think seconded by Mr. McKeever.
I will do a roll call vote. I do have a question for the full council, um, playing back to the public lands and buildings committee, uh, generator topic. Um, I was given that. Patient sheet from the administration. Did not, in a need for legislation, it was about hoping that the quote would be under fifty thousand, which I believe they're still hoping for. Um, the, uh, most afternoon though, that they are looking for an appropriation. An appropriation would require legislation to appropriate a certain amount of money. Um, we don't know what that number is. Uh, the auditor's not been in this evening. Uh, the topic has been reviewed, not only the public lands, also to finance, um.
I'm having a really hard time. There's somebody, somebody.
Yeah, I, I think Mark. Mike was giving feedback, but he just muted it there, I see.
Okay, I'll start over again. Um, the, uh. Public lands and buildings committee, the city hall generator topic, um. I was told by the administration this morning that they do not need legislation, that they, they don't anticipate legislation because they are hoping that the quotes. They receive will be under fifty thousand, but then I was told later in the afternoon that they. Would require legislation for, uh, an appropriation, obviously. Um, I don't know the number for that and the number is not listed on that sheet and the auditor was not in the meeting this evening. Um. But, uh, this topic is in finance as an open project as well as public lands. I would suggest, uh, if we are going to, uh. Entertain a motion to request legislation that that will have to go through finance in, in addition to public lands. Which means we would have to have a finance committee meeting. Um, finance can meet this evening, but again, we don't have a number, so I wouldn't recommend that. Uh, since everyone is here, would finance be okay with having a special meeting before the next regular meeting? Of council on May five at say six forty-five? I would need, uh, majority of the committee to, to so recommend. Could go ahead and, uh, auditor and get a number. For the, uh. For a May five special finance meeting if, if the finance committee is okay with that.
I'd be fine with that.
I am fine with that also.
Okay, I also would know from either Mr. Me or Mr. Truca.
Yeah. Oh yeah, I got a question. Does that have to be bid out?
It does, but I, I was told that if it's under fifty thousand, that doesn't, that not come before council. Um, if it goes over fifty thousand, then yeah, it would come before council for legislation.
Okay. Yeah, that's fine. What day was it?
Uh, their next regular meeting is on May five and, um, I have no inside information and I don't think anybody does, but maybe if we cross our fingers, we can be meeting in person on May five. Um, if everything goes. Optimistically, um, so I will, um, when we get around to it, I will put a, um, special finance meeting on the agenda for. Six forty-five on Tuesday, May five, before the next regular committee meeting. Um, Mr. President, do you want me to do a roll call vote on the motion to adjourn?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, um, Myers?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
B?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes, sorry.
Uh, Fode?
Yes.
All set?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we're adjourned at seven thirty, seven PM. And while everybody's on here, I did email the mayor and asked him if he was gonna be recording the Facebook or doing the Facebook live. And his response back to me. Was. It was only that what, it was only this and it said, there was only six people watching that. And that's all he said. So. I don't know what that means. He didn't tell me yes and he didn't tell me no, so I don't, I don't know what that means. Okay, I'm, oh, you can go ahead and stop recording there.